Good evening. In the absence of President Kate Parks and Vice President Lisa Whitman, as Board Secretary, I will be convening the regular meeting of the August 8th, 2022 Dubuque Community School Board until a temporary chairperson is appointed. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. I will now take roll call. Bradley?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Parks?
Prohaska?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Sancy?
Here.
Whitman? At this time, I will take a motion to appoint a temporary chairperson.
I move that the Board of Education appoint Tammy Ryan as the temporary chairperson for the regular meeting of August 8th, 2022.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education appoint Tammy Ryan as temporary chairperson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries. All right, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 18th and the work session of August 1st, 2022 as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 18th and the work session of August 1st, 2022 as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And that takes us now to Board Salutes, and I believe Mr. Sancy, you have one.
Yes, I do. So this past Saturday, we hosted the Back to School Bash. We as in the community and the district, and the Back to School Bash is a one-stop-shop event where community members can come together and get connected to needed resources to help them prepare for the upcoming school year. So it's an opportunity for families to come and learn about the schools, learn about school supplies, school bus transportation passes, and this year, we always add a theme. This year's theme was building healthier communities, and we had our amazing district reach out to some of the health facilities in the community to make sure students were able to get their vaccinations, their student vaccination, also their physical vaccination. And so I have a huge shout-out that I want to give to a lot of people, and some of them are not on my agenda, so give me a second. The first one is to Mark and the Building and Grounds team. They made sure we had tables, chairs, and all the necessary things to make sure all of the community partners could be able to connect with the families out there. I want to thank our superintendent, who encouraged all of her building administrative team and district leadership team to come out and connect with families, to register families, not only for school, they had over 100 families that they registered, but also when you watched them, they were able to just connect with families and hug on the students. And it was amazing just to see that our district team doing that, and so I want to thank Amy and her team. I want to thank De'Er and Jay Evans, who works for the Equity Department. They really co-facilitated this entire event, so I do want to make sure that they know we truly appreciate them. They came up with the idea of infusing the health, reaching out to the team, making sure there was transportation, really removing all the barriers that would prevent people from attending. I want to thank Ottoman for opening up their school building to the community. In the past, this event was at Comiskey Park, and Saturday, the amount of people who came and said, hey, this space was just more of a, just a nicer space, and there was air-condition for people to hang out. It was amazing. And Tom, who was the janitor at Ottoman, real kudos to him. He went the extra mile that day for making sure, again, we had everything we needed, taking the trash out, working with the families to clean up and the staff. So again, it does take a community, I was reminded of that, and Amy, with your leadership, I just want to thank you again for just empowering people to attend that event, so thank you.
Yeah, it was a great day. We had a huge turnout, which was wonderful to see, and a lot of kids having a lot of fun, too, so it was good.
Thank you.
Great. We have one also. Board salute goes to everyone involved in the district's summer academy program. These programs would not be possible without the support of so many from the district teachers who deliver instruction to the many community organizations and individuals who provided enrichment activities to round out the experience for students, including our school resource officers, the City of Dubuque Leisure Services, Iowa State University Extension and Outreach, Carnegie Stout Public Library, Challenge to Change, the National Mississippi River Museum and Aquarium, and pardon me if I get this wrong, Chona Kush and Patty Milias. Thank you also to the families who chose to sign their students up for this programming. It has proven to be valuable and desired learning opportunity for our students. I can speak, when my daughter went through it last year, she loved it, and it really carried her reading on to bridge that gap through summer. So also thanks to the staff members who facilitated extended school year return to learn and credit recovery opportunities for our students. Learning doesn't stop over the summer, and we are thankful to all involved in our summer programming to serve our students.
Great, thank you.
Can I add one more of my apologies? Please blame my old mind and not my heart. The DEA, you know, they were also involved, and I believe this is their second year or third year participating in providing airbags to the students, so just know we're truly appreciative of your commitment to that event as well, so thank you so much.
All right. Are you good? None of you good? All right.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Any persons wishing to address the board can do so at this time. You are limited to three minutes and need to state your name and affiliation with the district. So anybody wishing to can come forward.
We'll see how I do with those three minutes. I'm Sharon Klein, and I'm currently the head coach for the Dubuque Hempstead Girls Cross-Country Team. And I'm just coming to, I guess, I have basically two main questions. I'm concerned about the Dubuque Community Schools District's cross-country course being sold. As a varsity coach in the district, I don't see a football coach, baseball coach, or softball coach having to worry about losing their football field, or baseball field, or softball field, but the cross-country programs in our school district, and not just Hempsteads, but seniors, our junior high programs, where do you plan on having us, you know, race practice at if we lose the Dubuque Community Schools cross-country course? I know everyone calls it the soccer complex, but obviously, from my perspective, it's the cross-country course. That's where we've competed at since we got kind of booted off Bunker Hill. I've asked different administrators, and no one's really given me an answer of what the game plan is, because when we do host divisional or super meet, we can have anywhere from 300 athletes to 1,000 athletes. When we're hosting a state qualifying, which we're hoping to again, we're going to have probably 70 to 100 athletes, and you're going to have their parents, grandparents coming. So you need a facility that can be a good enough place for a cross-country course, 3.1 miles, for the athletes to run successfully through it without any kind of interruption, and you have to have parking, you have to have water, you have to have bathrooms. My other concern is if the Soccer Alliance does purchase the soccer complex, and that's where the cross-country course is, will there be a written agreement, or what is going to protect us to have rights to there, to practice, to compete there still? Because, you know, their management or their, you know, team might change in a few years, and maybe that team doesn't want cross-country to be there. We have some great, great athletes in this town, between Waller, Senior, and Hempstead. We've had many successful seasons and teams, and I just feel really badly that they're not treated with the same respect as the other sports, that we're going to lose our facility possibly if this sale goes through. What's it look like if it, you know, does get sold to the Soccer Alliance? What does that look like, then? Will we have rights to it? Will we get to go out there and practice? That's my concerns. I call it the soccer complex. I also call it our home course for the Dubuque Community Schools, and we have some great kids that love to run out there. I also want to thank you for the shout-outs to the girls' team this past year, shout-outs to me. I don't get those awards unless it's those athletes, and I want to thank the Hempstead family, and I want to thank the Dubuque Community School District for always backing those programs, and I hope we can continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Just a comment in terms of...
We don't comment on...
...re-congratulating our Hempstead, our Hempstead cross-country team for being the state champions.
We just tend to not do anything at all during these.
Hello, my name is Christine Efforting. Some of you know me as my, through my role as 7th grade language arts teacher at Jefferson, but I'm here today as a board member and representative from the Dubuque Soccer Alliance. I'd like to begin by offering just some personal notes, as I've been involved at the soccer complex since I was just five years old. My first experience playing at the complex was skipping up and down the field picking flowers, arm-in-arm with a teammate. Later memories include heartbreaking losses and hard-fought wins. Through my involvement in AYSO, Dubuque Soccer Club, high school sports, and eventually coaching, I've developed skills that made me the person standing in front of you. I learned the importance of teamwork when our lead scorer got hurt during our championship game of Soccer Fest, and we rallied together to win anyway. I learned work ethic by not being the best player on the field and having coaches who pushed me to do better even when I didn't believe I could. I learned resilience when my U-14 team, coached by my dad, lost every single game one summer, and we continued to show up and have fun. To this day, that's the most fun season I've ever had. I learned leadership when Western Dubuque High School needed an assistant coach during my student teaching, and I said, sure, why not, despite having no real coaching experience. These challenges and accomplishments have made me a daughter, sister, teacher, and community member that I am today, and I'll forever be grateful that the community had the soccer complex to facilitate programs in which I could grow to my fullest potential. These formative opportunities and experiences have led me to be here in front of you today as a board member of the Soccer Alliance. For the last 30 years, the Soccer Alliance and the school district have worked closely to maintain our beautiful soccer complex. Countless hours, blood, sweat, and tears have been poured into making it one of the better facilities in the area. As you may already know, the Soccer Alliance is thrilled that we were able to secure financing and place an official bid to purchase the land that we've leased and operated the last three decades. We believe in our organization's ability to maintain and enhance the soccer complex to its fullest potential. Of course, none of that would be possible without the help of the school district and board along the way. In this time of transition, we seek to express our utmost gratitude for your partnership thus far in creating this invaluable community resource. Since its inception, the complex has served the soccer community at all levels, as well as hosted many district and non-district cross-country meets, 5K benefit runs, and a variety of other building events. We look forward to continuing our relationship with the district, and thank you for past, present, and future support in our efforts to maintain the critical community asset that is the soccer complex. Thank you for your time, and best wishes as we move forward in the upcoming school year. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Adam Ikamp. I am the Dubuque Soccer Alliance Treasurer and the Dubuque Soccer Club Treasurer. I have an art degree, so it makes sense that I would be the treasurer as well. So I want to thank the school board and their time for this matter. It's really important to us, obviously, and I want to thank you for the opportunity, for the collaboration we've had in the last 30 years, as the Soccer Alliance has been stewards of that land for 30 years, and we hope for many, many more beyond 30. I want to just please remind you that I know it's easy to look at the price of this place and what it might be worth, but please don't confuse the price of it for what the actual value of this place is. Any sale to what might be the highest bid might be a real short-term gain, money-wise, but I think it's a long-term and very generational loss for the community to not have it be sold to the Dubuque Soccer Alliance. I welcome all of you to come out to any of our games that we have, whether it be AYSO, Key City, or DSC. And the angle that I want you to view it through is not just the parents and the players and the grandparents out there, because we've all seen that. I ask that you look at the referees, actually. I have a young referee, Tim Shade has a referee. These are 13, 14, 15-year-old, 15-year-old young men and women who are making money or gaining volunteer hours for their silver courts, and they're running and managing this game. And this isn't just managing a soccer game at this point. These are the young leaders that are going to be managing our, our community in the next 10, 15 years, they're going to be 30 years old then. And Iowa has a long history of being a brain drain. We all wear well of that. How many of us moved to Chicago, Minneapolis, Denver? And if we lose the soccer complex, I guarantee you, these young leaders are going to be leaving because they're going to look for soccer opportunities for their kids. And so that's, that's the value that I speak of with this. So please don't dismiss the Dubuque Soccer, I'm sorry. This is how much I care, I'm sorry, I'll be myself in front of you. Please don't dismiss the Soccer Alliance as a steward that they've been for the last 30 years. When you go through these bids, I really appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Cameron Scott, and if you can't tell, I'm from Scotland originally. So I spent 17 years growing up in Scotland, playing soccer since I can remember, probably a good 13 to 12 years of that time that I spent back home. One of the things that my club went through back home is pretty similar, except it was a, it was a large corporation that came in, bought the grounds, and basically shifted the club from where it had played for 45 to 50 years. The changes that the club has went through in that time period has not been reversed. They still don't have a, have a home, they still don't have a place to put the locker rooms, all the trophies, the offices that had been at that certain place for that length of, length of time. And so the similarities that I see right now with the complex is almost identical, but in the sense that America places such an emphasis alongside academics, athletics. And so when you mix the two together, the way that America does, you really can't have academics without giving the kids time off, away from devices, away from staying in the house. And so, like the gentleman said two minutes ago, come out and see the amount of kids that we have throughout the week, on the weekends, whether it's in-town or out-of-town kids, spending time with other people, socializing with people their own age. They're not sitting watching Netflix for 12, 13 hours a day after they get off of school. And for me, being involved with DSC for the last four years, it's really became a big part of my life and my coaching. Currently, I'm at UD, and I could have very easily have turned around and walked away from DSC, but giving back to the kids and teaching them what I was taught throughout the 12, 13 years that I've played soccer overseas, again, there's nothing that can really replace it, and so by making the complex anything other than used for soccer, track and field, cross-country, whatever it might be, would be a tragedy. It would be a tragedy on a, on a mental health basis, on a social basis, but also an economic basis for, for the city. If you look at the amount of money that is brought in by visitors coming for tournaments, games on a weekly basis, it's really unmatched, especially with soccer being one of the main growing sports in Dubuque. And so just to kind of highlight on everything I've said, selling the complex for anything other than used athletic-wise, it would be a tragedy to not only the parents who enjoy bringing their kids there, but also the younger generations, and that's why, that's why I'm here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kristi Gatto. I am a parent of students within the district. Over the last 12 years, our family has seen the Dubuque soccer complex a lot. Many weeks, we are there four to five nights a week. All four of my children play soccer with AYSO, and my oldest also opted to play soccer on the Dubuque Senior High School varsity team. For my daughter, who played soccer at senior, had it not been for the available, availability to play in her younger years, she would have never played in high school either. The soccer complex is for the kids, and it gives them something to look forward to and something to do in this town that seems to lack options. Keep them busy, keeps them healthy, and out of trouble. That truly is care for our children. I have also volunteered several years as a coach for my youngest team. It was a rewarding experience, and from that perspective, I saw the connectedness of families come together for their children. I've seen countless friendships form from our years on the soccer fields. The impact that the soccer complex has on our community has immeasurable value and an asset that would be detrimental to lose. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Are there any items any board members wish to have pulled? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And that takes us also now to facilities and support services, and I think this is the first time we've never had a motion for this. But we do have a report. So please, Mr. Sancy.
Yes, so I'll do one specifically. We've been having a lot of conversation at the board level and in the community about next steps with some of our facilities and how to be more efficient. If you remember, we've had discussion about at the elementary level, although we've been receiving low state funding, and we've been seeing kind of a decrease in student populations, that there was opportunities to be more efficient. So at the elementary, there was an opportunity to save about a million dollars, and then at the middle school level, there was an opportunity to save about 3 million. And so that allowed us to discuss an opportunity for us to have a consultant to come in and engage stakeholders throughout the community to talk about the different possibilities that could, could happen with our buildings. And so they started by engaging stakeholders to understand where are we currently at with existing middle school buildings, looking at square footage, student population, what are the buildings being utilized? They also are looking at what are the possibilities moving down the road and asking the stakeholders, what do they think, what do they want to see, and how do we make sure we're delivering an equitable service to all of our customers, which is our students and our teachers? And with that data gathering, what they plan to do next is to look at the opportunities. If we did want to look at new sites or add on to a site, what are those possibilities? And they're going to bring all of that data and information, not only to the board, but also back to the stakeholders, so they can continue to say, here's what we've heard, here's what we're thinking, what do you want to see moving forward? With the board having the final say on what does potentially consolidating our middle schools look like. And so we want to continue to keep that at the forefront to all of our residents in the Dubuque community to understand the why, first of all. Of course, we love all of our school buildings, but when you see low funding coming in and you're seeing a trajectory of low students, we have to find ways to be efficient, not only for our district, but also to retain the amazing talent that we have within the district. And so as we continue to go through this process, we want to continue to keep you engaged. We'll continue to find ways to get your input throughout the process, and eventually we'll have the consultant come in and provide all that data for us. So I just wanted to bring that to the tensions of the residents of Dubuque.
Great, thank you. Educational Programs and Policy Committee report, Ms. Bradley.
Thank you. We met on August 2nd, and as always, the, the agenda is divided into normally two sections, the educational programs part of it, where we hear about programs that are going on in the district, some that are coming up. We get some mini updates on our strategic plan in the areas that affect educational programming, and then the second part is policy. So in that fashion, we did that, but this, at this meeting, we had a third item as well. I'll report on that in a moment. Terms of ed programs, we heard an update at this meeting about the secondary summer school. Executive Director of Secondary Schools, Mark Burns, brought us that information, and the board was delighted to hear from Mark that as a result of the summer programming for students in 6th through 12th grade, a total of 291 credits has been earned just over the summer, and of those, five students are planning to be graduated on August 16th, students who would otherwise likely not have been graduating now or at all. So we were very, very pleased to hear that. In addition to that, we know that Mark, Mr. Burns, brought us the Priority Initiative Number Three, which is in the strategic plan. It's called Optimal Learning Environment, and he, along with De'Er Littleton, who is our Director of Equity for the district, brought us information and a schematic, and if anyone wants to see the schematic, we'll certainly make that available, in which that whole area, which is the, in terms of what is that, it is a five-tier schematic for pre-kindergarten through 12th grade students in the implementation of Priority Initiative Number Three. And that's the commitment to unfolding potential. So we were very, very pleased to see that many of the parts and pieces of that are being pulled together. I think every time we see individual discrete items being pulled together in tandem with others, our chance of implementation gains, and such is the case, I believe, when we look at the various areas. In a nutshell, what is Strategic Priority Number Three? It's looking at improved attendance, behavior, and academic success of students, and through that, then seeing an increase in confidence and efficacy and well-being of our adult staff who work so hard with our students to see their success and bring them success. So we were very pleased with that. We appreciate that update from Mark and De'Er, and these are the kinds of things that happen at the committee meetings that don't come before us in a, in the regular monthly board meeting. So for those of you who have any interest in hearing either about the Facilities Committee, with which Mr. Sancy has just reflected on that meeting, or in the case of the Educational Programs and Policy Committee, we welcome you. They are not televised meetings, but we welcome the public to come and see the kinds of things that are being discussed there. It's a good opportunity to learn more. In terms of the policies at this meeting, we dealt with three of them. Policies are on a five-year rotational cycle to be reviewed and potentially revised, all policies of the board in every community in Iowa every five years. So we have a handful of them at each meeting. This meeting, we dealt with international students, with weapons, and with unpaid meal accounts. None of those received large amendments to them, but improvements, and I think that we continue to appreciate Amy and her team's work in bringing us good improvements and recommendations for each of our policies as we view them. I mentioned at the beginning, there's a third area that we dealt with at this time. We've received information from the Iowa Association of School Boards that a proposed bylaws amendment is coming before, before the delegates in a special meeting coming up September 13th. The point of it is to look at national affiliation with the National School Board Association versus another one, another state facility, state consortium, which has formed, and right now, 22 districts in Iowa are in one of them, or 22 states are in one of versus another one, another state facility, state consortium, which has formed. And right now, 22 districts in Iowa, in one of them, or 22 states are in one of those, 25 states are in the other. So, as a result of our conversation at the, at the committee meeting, we decided that our, our delegate to that assembly, who is our board president, Kate Parks, we would support the bylaws amendment change, which looks at giving the Board of Directors of the Iowa Association of School Boards the authority to make that decision between those, or any other really, national affiliate on a year-by-year basis. So, that was our discussion. Again, you don't hear much coming forward about that, but we're pleased to be able to bring a summary.
Great. Thank you. Any new business? No new business. Board member or administrative issues?
I have a question I'd like to bring up. I mean, you hear so much in the national news about teacher shortage and stuff like that. So, kind of maybe either Brian or Amy, if you give us a little recap, like how we're set for the coming school year in our teachers or other employees?
Do you guys come up and talk about the QI2?
Yeah, the, the shortage is definitely real. I, I think our applicant pool is down from what we've seen in the past, but we're in a really good spot compared to the other UEN groups that we talked to. We are in the single digits right now for a number of positions that are still open. And a lot of those are either specialists at the elementary level or special education positions and a couple of, of the Title I reading positions. But other than that, we're doing pretty well with that. And, and I believe in a conference we were at last week, we were looking at some of the other UEN groups, 96 to, you know, 100 positions that were open. So, we're comparatively doing well, but, but still, the, the applicant pool has gone down with the number of college students going into the education programs is significantly dropping. But hopefully, we see an uptick in that and, and we don't feel the wrath of that as much as some other places. So, we're doing well.
I would also add that Brian and his team are doing a really good job of, you know, going out and recruiting. They just did the mobile job fair again today, going to different locations in the City of Dubuque to try to recruit employees as we, as the school year is approaching rather quickly. So, you know, our staff comes back on Monday, the 15th. Our majority of our staff that comes back that day. So, we're looking forward to filling as many of those positions as we can. And our, our principals have done a very good job of being creative with some scheduling as well. So, we appreciate their work with that, that moving forward.
So, in terms of community knowing, it sounds as if we have other positions besides teaching positions that would still be available
Absolutely.
For those who have interest.
Absolutely. Parapositions, paraprofessionals, food service employees, and bus drivers are probably the three highest areas of demand right now. So, if, if anybody knows someone who's wanting to do those three or is interested in those positions, please reach out to us. We'd be happy to talk.
Well, kudos to you guys for, for all the hard work and making sure that we have the year to kick off properly.
Yep.
The other, I think I was going to bring up is our, we have the kickoff, just a reminder, the kickoff meeting is
Yeah, so we have our kickoff at the Grand River Center on Monday, August 15th. And so, that'll start at 8:00 AM. So, invite all of our staff and to come and hopefully get it, be excited about the upcoming school year. And, and then, students will start orientation on the 22nd of August and then our first day of classes is the 23rd.
Great. Thank you.
Anything else?
So, if any students are yet needing to register, they should go to their home school to do that?
Yes.
Is that what you'd recommend?
Yep. They should get in contact with their home school for sure. Otherwise, they're more than welcome to come to our mobile registration locations. You know, we had a lot of students and families register at the, the back-to-school bash, which was fantastic. So, we will gladly get them registered for school and get them in the location that they need.
So, it's not too late?
It's not too late. No. Not at all.
It's never too late.
Yeah. That's right.
All right. Anything else? All right. We are adjourned.